Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. We found these on our desk. Am I correct to presume that we have you to thank?
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to be thought of. Uh, will rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allison?
Here.
Carmody? Bishbein? Laffin?
Here.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Here.
Testa? Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Sivoni?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Carmody's not feeling well. He was gonna dial in. Did, was he able to do that? No? Okay. Uh, can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through Y.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none. Consent agenda passes. Um, so we did make a few appointments on the consent agenda, and I note that Mr. Kohan is here. Would you like to come up and be sworn back in? Thank you for signing up again. Yep. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, public question and answer period. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yes, I live at this condo association, uh, old village circle condominium unit, uh, eighteen.
And your name?
Uh, Darrell Stancuna.
Thank you.
Um, basically, I wanna just reiterate, like, last month, we had, uh, the meeting about the thirty-four million dollars for the new police station. And again, I think it was a big mistake. There were a lot of problems with it. Uh, there was a lot of back and forth going on with you guys, and I, I really think that needs to be rescinded. Uh, we don't need another police station. The one over here is beautiful. The armory is gorgeous. There's nothing wrong. Um, adding another police station, thirty-four million dollars, is, is terrible idea. We have millions of dollars that should go to, uh, a recreational center for these youths that the meeting is going on about tonight, uh, with problems in town. There's nothing to do around here. These kids are walking around aimlessly. They're, the adults, you know, you guys aren't giving them any direction. You're just saying, okay, just go home or whatever. We need programs in this town. We have millions and millions of dollars of cash. We bought a thirty-four million dollar police station. These cameras and whatnot, they're not gonna talk to the children. We need communication amongst these kids. We need to get, either split the senior center in half, it's a very big building, or we could buy a, a building and have programs, uh, for them to have counseling, uh, to have, uh, job corps programs that they could enter, educational ones for after, uh, school to, um, be busy, uh, maybe some kind of guidance towards, uh, possible types of careers that they wanna, uh, enter and scholarships and whatnot. There's a, there's a lot of stuff we could do with the millions of dollars that we have in cash in this town. Uh, and on top of it, we need a homeless shelter. The one downtown is tiny. Um, you know, across the state, you see it on the news everywhere. There's homeless people all over the place. This town needs to give back. We're a very rich town. We have millions of dollars in cash. Build a homeless shelter, uh, start providing, start helping out society. Other cities, sending people to the Columbus House in New Haven is putting more weight on the inner cities. And that's wrong. The inner cities are, they're, uh, barely making it. This town is very wealthy. We should start providing and giving back to society. This is wrong. We don't live in a, a big fence, uh, border wall society over policing. That's not gonna be the answer. These cameras are not gonna be the answer. We need, again, to intervene with the kids, find out what's going on, add more funding towards, uh, programs for social workers, uh, something that's gonna intervene and help these kids to guide forward. Locking them up or whatever you wanna do, arrest them, and that's not the answer. So that's what, uh, I'm up here telling you, that we've got lots of money, and we should start giving back to New Haven, to Hartford, Meriden, um, start spending it, because hoarding it and just letting it sit there, making interest and bragging how much money we have, you can't take it with you. And that's what's falling apart in this town. We need to give back to the state. Help out. Call Ned Lamont. Let him know that, you know what, we could start funding here and let even the refugees come. We've got areas of Veterans Park, big land areas. We should let people come here. Tell, uh, Mayor Adams in New Ha- uh, New York that we could provide. That's what I'm saying. And, and whether you like it or not, you probably don't, but guess what? We're all on this little planet together, and we're losing our, uh, integrity, and we have plenty of resources. So we gotta stop being selfish.
Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Question through the chair to the mayor?
You might wanna speak up.
Okay. Question through the chair to the mayor. Um, last year, the state of Connecticut had a new five-cent refund for those little bottles that people drink booze out of and throw them away, and the town received like fifty-two thousand. Do you know what the town did with that money or is planning to do with the money?
We have received the money. It hasn't been appropriated yet.
Do you have an idea what you plan on trying to do with that money?
Apparently, the mic's not picking you up, Mr. Gross.
Do you know what they plan on doing with the money?
My chief concern right now with, is regard to the, uh, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So that's occupying time and concerns. Unless, unless the state requires it to be used for some
Oh, it does.
other purpose.
It does require it to be used for certain purposes, but I was just, but there's, but as with ARPA, it has a wide variety of uses that it can be used for. Um, it's just a shame that it's just sitting there, that you could be using it to, it could be used to fix parks. Um, the other thing is, question through the chair to the mayor, about the same thing. Last year, there was a settlement with Johnson and Johnson and three other big, uh, Cardinal Health and so forth. And I don't know how much money this town received, and that was through the opioid, uh, settlement. So has the town decided how they're gonna spend that money?
Uh, again, the primary concern is the budget. I, I will certainly be speaking with Health Department and, uh, Youth and Social Services with regard to programs that, uh, would be advisable. But at this time, we have not made those decisions.
Received the money last year. It's not like it's came yesterday. So I just, you know, it's just a shame, because it is to be used for yo- youth and social services, for drug interventions, those type of things, and hopefully that you're not just sitting on the money that would be used for programs in town to bolster those programs or to start new programs to help the community out instead of just letting this money just sit in two piles. And it, it's not a lot of money, but it's something that could be beneficial to the town instead of letting it just sit there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see no more takers for the public question and answer period. Onto item six. Can we have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a bid waiver in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and eight dollars to Big Toys for purchase of playscape to P and P Insulation to install playscape at Doolittle Park.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Um, we have a representative from the Recreation Department. Mr. Michaels, would you like to join us for a little while?
Good evening.
So, um, my understanding is that, uh, the reason why we're looking for this bid waiver is because we've identified the same exact playscape that, uh, has been destroyed and will have a near-perfect retrofit replacement, um, coming in. And, uh, am I correct?
That is correct. So we were fortunate enough that the company, Big Toys, that installed, um, I would say probably about eighty-five percent of the pieces over at Doolittle Park still makes the same piece that was destroyed in that, uh, October fire. Um, so we are fortunate that we are able to get that same piece, um, to install into the same exact footprint, um, to which the park was designed. So, um, we are looking to have the bid waiver to go directly through Big Toys to purchase direct with the installation from the same company, um, that did the two thousand five install of, of the current playscape that is there.
And do you have some idea of when in the season we can expect to have that part of the park back up and running?
Um, so the lead time right now from the time of order, um, is eight weeks, eight to ten weeks. So it all comes down to when the purchase order is completed and received, and then eight to ten weeks from that point.
Okay.
If all goes according to plan.
And the funding sources, we have the insurance proceeds from the claim we've made, plus a twenty thousand dollar donation from Choate Rosemary Hall. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I do wanna thank Choate Rosemary Hall for their donation, um, you know, for this, um, repair and installation for this project.
You can do that near personally, because there are some representatives here. Um, if one or both of you could approach the mic and just, um, uh, we are certainly very grateful. Um, you know, this was, this experience was an incredible disruption to that park. You know, it was kind of a culmination of a history of disruption. Um, and, uh, I, I think everybody up here is certainly very grateful for Choate's participation in restoring that park to what it was before, um, this unfortunate fire. So thank you. If you could let, remind us who you are for the record.
Absolutely. I'm Allison Katie. I'm the Chief Communications Officer at Choate Rosemary Hall.
You have to get closer to the mic.
Allison Katie, Chief Communications Officer, Choate Rosemary Hall. And, uh, on behalf of the school, we just wanna say, um, we're very pleased to make this donation. We were very disheartened to hear of this, um, unfortunate event. And we know it's been a really difficult time for our youth, young people, teens and children, and we hope that this will expedite, um, that, that this playground can be reinstated very quickly for the community.
Thank you again. Questions, comments from the council? Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening. Um, a couple of questions. I'm not sure, uh, who's, who's supposed to answer them, but, um, my first question is, why did the insurance company not cover the entire replacement cost? Because certainly, we're appreciative of, of Choate's donation, but I'm just wondering, um, why it was necessary that we had to, that the donation had to get thrown in instead of the insurance covering the full cost after the deductible?
That I don't have an answer for. I don't handle the insurance portion of it. Um, that would be a risk management question.
I, I think the insurance pretty much covered the cost. However, the generous donation from Choate, um, have, have us using the Choate donation, and there, there is money, I believe, left over from what the insurance company provided.
Okay, 'cause I thought that the, the item seven is sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. And then the deductible, I believe?
Deductible is ten thousand.
Okay, so this is in the backup. The cost for the replacement and installation will be covered through forty-three thousand, four oh six of insurance money, fifty-nine oh one fifty insurance deductible, and twenty thousand donated by Choate. So from that letter, it looked like the total cost was the sixty-nine, three oh eight, which was the deductible, the forty-three thousand from insurance, and the twenty thousand from Choate. So is there, there's money left over, you're saying, after?
Well, the deductible, it represents money that the town would use to cover that deductible. We're not having to do that because Choate provided twenty thousand. But I believe there was insurance money in excess, uh, especially with the town not having to put in the deductible amount.
Okay, so the co- but the cost of the playscape is sixty-nine thousand, three oh seven fifty, correct?
That's with the installation.
And we're installing it?
No, nope.
The company's?
The company's installing it. The company that installed it two thousand five is gonna be the same company that's installing this piece again.
Okay, so if the total cost is sixty-nine thousand, three oh seven, including the installation, I'm just wondering why the insurance didn't cover the entire amount? Once the deductible was paid?
Again, my recollection is there may be insurance money that is not being used for this. It would be left over be, because we are using the Choate donation to cover costs.
Okay. I guess I'm just confused on why we would use a donation as opposed to just using our insurance money.
Because Choate generously provided the money, and would, they would not want that money used for something else. So we're directing it to the purpose for their donation, which was to, uh, bring the park back to a, a more beautiful or, setting for the, for the young people in town.
Oh, sure. No, absolutely. I, I understand that, that's their intent. I'm just, I'm just wondering why we would... I guess I'm just wondering why we would accept a donation if our insurance would be covering it. So basically, the insurance is who's saving the money, not, not the town, if I'm understanding this correctly.
No, the, the insurance paid the amount of money. It's just a, a choice of what dollars are used to fund the project. So we're using twenty thousand dollars from Choate and then contribution from, or the, the payment from the insurance company to cover the cost. I believe there was additional, the amount that the insurance company paid was, we'd be in excess of what we need for this project if we put all of that money toward this project.
Okay, so the insurance company was not covering the full amount?
No, the, the insurance company covered the full amount minus the deductible. Choate indicated that they would like to make a donation. That's twenty thousand dollars. So there's at least probably ten thousand dollars left over that the insurance company did pay. But given that Choate chose to make an improvement, help us make an improvement to the park, we felt it was appropriate to use the Choate donation toward this project and honor their desire to have Doolittle be the subject of that payment.
Okay. Um, my next question is, again, I'm not sure who, who here can, maybe be able to answer this, but I'm wondering if those who were arrested, I know we got the, um, press release today that, that they did arrest, um, I believe it was four individuals. I'm wondering if they're going to have to pay anything towards this, or is there any sort of restitution and how that would be handled?
That ultimately will be up to the court system. Uh, typically, they do require restitution where they can, uh, whether that's part of what a judgment would be. It, it's a lot of discussions and, uh, arguments of council, et cetera, and it will ultimately be resolved by the court.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Counselor Marone, did I see your hand? Thank you. Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so first, I, I, I would like to take the opportunity, because, uh, when we had the item on the consent agenda prior, uh, I had removed it in order to, just to talk a little bit about Choate taking some action proactively. Uh, I made the comments then, and I'll make it now. I, I've, I've been supportive of things that Choate has done for the town and critical of actions and activities that I felt were, were a pressure to the town. So I'm always, I'm always willing to, uh, you know, appreciate efforts and then, you know, call into question some other options. So I, I, it, it's not a, uh, pandering thing when I say that I really appreciate that they took the initiative to step forward, um, to say, look, this was, this was wrong, uh, the way, the community was wronged in this incident, and we wanna do something to make a positive impact. So I'm, I just wanna express my thanks to Choate for doing that. Nobody gets it perfect all the time, but when, when they, any organization, any, any committee, any group, any individual rises to an occasion, I think credit is where, is, credit should be given where credit is due. And I, I wanna personally say thank you. So I wanted to start with that. Um, to Counselor Tada's point, I'm gonna kinda add to it and then dovetail a little bit. Um, I've gotten a lot of calls about this prior to the press release today. Um, actually, when, when the fire broke out, I had residents call me. I actually went down there while the fire was still burning. Um, what I, what I, I, I also called the chief of police today after the press release. So one of the concerns that spun up today after the, the press release was circulated was a concern that, you know, the, the way that the charge reads, everybody was concerned about, you know, uh, you know, criminal mischief in the first degree, you know, that, that, to a lot of people's ears, that's a misdemeanor. It's not. It's a felony charge. So I just wanna put that out there and make that abundantly clear, that people understand that the four individuals that have been charged with this, this is a felony charge. Now, whether or not it gets carried or reduced, that, that goes, much like the merit indicated, with whatever happens in the court. Um, at, at this point in time, that, that is, the, the charge is being pressed as a felony charge. But I do have a couple of questions about, um, going back towards the restitution comment. Um, if, if restitution is part of any judgment that gets made, and I guess it's kinda to either Mr. Senna or the mayor, if we receive these monies, um, at some point in the future, do we have any idea what we would generally do with something like that?
I would hope we would be able to use them in other improvements at, uh, Doolittle Park or another park, but, uh, the, I would hope that that would be the, the, uh, judgment of everyone. That would include, you know, certainly administration's recommendation and the council appropriating funds, but it comes in as revenue and has to be appropriated.
All right. So that, so then you're basically indicating that it's just gonna be a matter of having an appropriation made, and we could put it to some use that's agreed upon based on the appropriation. All right, excellent. That's, that's good to hear. You know, I, I guess I'm just gonna kinda close my comments, um, with, you know, I, I, I get into a lot of different conversations with people about, you know, some of the items that Mr. Stancuna brought up about, there's, you know, there's, there's not much for the kids to do, and, you know, we, we've gotta, gotta have some, you know, activities and things for them to do. We've got it, we've got, our Recreation Department's got a lot of different programs. They don't appeal to everybody, but you can't make everybody happy. But it's, to suggest that there's not programs there or to allude to the idea that there maybe isn't enough programming for youth is a concern of mine, because I think there's a lot of programming. It doesn't necessarily fit everyone, but there's, there's a, a lot of programming there. I grew up in this town. There's probably more things to do in this town today than there was when I was a kid. Um, and that's a testament to an evolution of wanting to try to support the youth. Um, there's, there's more sports, sports programs than were available when I was a kid in the school systems. Um, times change. Obviously, like, in summer times, they don't have the, they don't have the same type of, act, you know, organized and structured activities at the town parks that they used to, but kids don't attend them anymore. But there are programs available. I think, at the end of the day, my, my biggest concern is what I perceive to be sometimes as a brush-off. Kids will be kids. Kids will be kids is, is a fine, uh, comment to make, you know, maybe when they're not setting fire to things. You know, kids getting into a little bit of harmless mischief is a different story than riding bicycles down the, the center of, of Main, North Main Street where they're impairing traffic or lighting things on fire at eleven o'clock at night. I think there's a, a big, big difference. And I think that the police department is doing everything they can within their, their limited ability to actually catch these kids or even the adults that do things, 'cause there's adult problems too, um, in this town. They're hamstrung by legislation that's in place coming down from Hartford. So when it looks like it's all catch and release, it's because the laws don't allow any additional enforcement. And I want everybody to kinda keep that in mind as well. Um, this doesn't start and stop in Wallingford. I, I think we need to really take a long look at what can be done. And, and it doesn't necessarily mean arrest people and throw them in jail for extended periods of time. We have to figure out what the problems are and address them, but not having any punishment for a crime committed. I don't care what level it is, is not the answer. We've seen that. That's why they get released on bail and they go right back to doing what they're doing, because there's no, there's no risk to them, and we need to reintroduce risk. My generation that grew up, we had risk if we got into trouble, and none of us are worse for it. Um, and I think we need to take a long, hard look at maybe, uh, directing some change going back up to Hartford. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Michaels.
You're welcome.
Thank you to the representatives from Cho. Your generosity is very much appreciated. On the question of what would happen if restitution was received, I would pose the question of would not the insurance company potentially have a right to seek that money? Or would they have to actually sue the families for it? That's something to keep in mind, but whatever. I was okay with this until Counselor Tadic questioned the breakdown of the expenditure and the mayor, the way you answered it. So now I'm confused. And I'm confused in this way. If I read this, it looks very clear that, it appears very clear that the insurance company was willing to pay $43,000. They required a $5,900 deductible and the balance was then utilized, was covered by the donation from Cho. If in fact, the insurance company was paying $63,000, but in order to honor the request rightfully, we're applying that request to this project, then we take less money from the insurance company. As long as we still can use that $20,000 for something else, I'm okay with that too. But my question to you would be, why did we not at least apply some of the money from Cho to the deductible? So that there was nothing coming out of the town's pay pockets? Why would we set aside extra money from the insurance company and, and I don't think Cho would mind if their money went towards a deductible. They, they want, they want to help the town. So that's all I would ask. Why are we still paying $5,900 out of taxpayer dollars and putting extra insurance money in the bank and applying the Cho Rosemary donation as such? That's my simple question. Placed, not quite so simply.
Well, my understanding is we are not paying the deductible. We have the money to cover that. We don't need to take the money from the deductible.
Okay. That's not what our backup-
That was my, Kenny, isn't that your understanding of it?
So I'm looking at it as the, the insurance money being $43,000 and then using $5,900 of the insurance deductible money and $20,000 from Cho. It's not the full deductible.
That's what the backup says.
Well, the total deductible was $10,000.
Correct.
My understanding was we were not going to use the deductible. We were using the money from the insurance and, and using the money from Cho.
Maybe we can just get this clarified and reported back to us at a later date. It's not, I'm not going, I'm not going to not accept this. This is wonderful. It's just, I think it's a reasonable question. It's on our behalf to make.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure what, what the confusion is, but the intention was to use the generation, the, the donation from Cho and the insurance money. And my information was that the insurance money covered it other than the $10,000 deductible. Well, it's Cho provided $20,000, so that should cover the deductible.
You just said, "other than the $10,000 deductible." I'm just, I'm just, it looks like we're still paying $5,900. That's what it looks like. That's how it's being explained. So I would just simply ask why, if in fact, there's extra insurance money and Cho donated $20,000, why are we still paying $5,900 of tax dollars towards a don, towards a deductible when it would appear by your explanations that that wouldn't be necessary? That's the question. I don't think it can be answered tonight clearly, and I'm okay with that. But I would appreciate it if maybe this is clarified for us at a later meeting, because the more we talk about it, the less, the less appears we're saying thank you to Cho. And thank you, Cho. And thank you, Kenny. And let's get this thing done. But that really should be answered. Thank you.
Just for a point of clarification, the motion on the table is just for the bid waiver. The next item discussed is the allocation of funds. I just, I just want our minds to be clear about what we're voting on when the roll is called on the vote on this item. That's all. Counselor laughing.
Thanks. Cho, thank you for your continued participation in the community. A lot, a lot goes unnoticed. This time, there's attention on it, but I wanted to draw extra attention that there are a lot of other things that Cho does and donates that don't get this sort of time on camera or in the news. To the police department for being quick and to, to Mr. Michaels and the, the whole park and rec department. You had enough on your plate already. This was completely unexpected. A lot of eyes were on you. You handled it very quickly in Wallingford time. So just thank you for, for all that you've done.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the public? Mr. Ross, if you could identify yourself for the record and address, please.
Ray Ross, Silver Pond Apartments. When I was a kid, if I broke a neighbor's window, my mother paid for it. Then I paid for it later. But I don't understand, we as a town can't take legal action against the parents of these kids, because the kids don't care and the parents will only care if there's, if they're, if they're, there's a consequence to the parents. And I, I don't see why we can't sue the parents.
Bob Gross Long Hill wrote, "Two things. One is, when you get the report back, will you make it public? Because what the mayor was saying was very convoluted tonight. So you got $69,000 less 10, so you got $59,000. Is that what he's saying?"
We'll certainly get a clarification.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
I point to the letter. The letter states, "No taxpayer funds will be used for this replacement." That's right in the letter.
Understand.
So if there's confusion over the, the deductible, I'm not sure why or what, but the statement is there. No taxpayer funds are being used.
So, but what I'm saying is then there's $10,000 left over or thereabout. Will that go towards just the general fund or will you use it to the parks? Because this is money that you didn't have before since Cho made a donation. The, they wanted to go for children. And we might get the deductible back to clarify everybody's point up, I think, and maybe the town attorney can, if I'm wrong. What will happen is we're out of it now, except for our deductible. We won't see any money. It's up to the insurance company to decide because they paid the claim. So it's up for them to decide whether they want to go after the parents or the courts. If there's money to be paid, that money will go to the insurance company. We will be in line percentage-wise if we get 100% back, meaning the insurance companies get 100% back. We will get our deductible, meaning the town of Wallingford. If they get 80%, we'll get 80% of our deductible, et cetera. So if we get that money back, we should know about that also, because then it would be the full $20,000 that's sitting there that Cho donated for betterment of the children. Hopefully, that the mayor will see fit that he will put it to use in one of the parks in town. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other takers, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Zirvoni?
Yes. Motion passes. Onto item seven, which-
Thank you all.
Thank you. Allocates the funds.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the appropriation of funds in the amount of $69,308.
Second.
Moved and seconded. More discussion? Counselor Tada.
Sorry to bring it up again, but I'm, I'm, I'm still confused. I'm not 100% comfortable with this. So if you add up, so there's, it says in, in the backup that the cost to purchase the playscape and installation is $69,307.50. So that's total cost. If you add the three numbers in the backup, the 43, 406 that the insurance is paying, the 59,0150 that's the insurance deductible, and the $20,000 donated by Cho, it adds up to the 69,307.50. So I'm not sure where the extra $10,000 comes in. And I'm, I just want to make sure that Cho isn't giving us a donation that then is in turn just getting passed on to an insurance company, because that's what it seems like to me is happening. Basically, we're, we're reducing the money that we would get from insurance by $20,000 because Cho is donating money to us. And I don't know that that's the best thing to do with a donation, is to hand it over to an insurance company that would just be paying us $20,000 more had we not had that donation. So that's my concern right now. And again, I'm not sure where the extra $10,000 is coming in.
We're not paying the insurance anything. Insurance paid us.
Yes.
So what this is doing is we're appropriating 69,308, which is the cost of the playscape. And we need two sources of revenue for that. They have to equal. So we're taking $27,000, $20,000 from the Cho donation. And then the other piece, the funds that get to 69,308 is insurance proceeds that we've received from the insurance company. We received more than that, but we don't need to appropriate more than that.
Oh, so how much did we receive in total then?
We'll, yeah, we'll have all that information for you when we do the summary that they, they want. I don't have it off the top of my head. I think it's probably another $10,000, but I don't know the exact number.
Okay. All right, well, that makes, that would make more sense. And so that would have been helpful to know because, so we actually received more than what's, what's in the backup?
Correct. But we only need to appropriate, we only need to match what we're appropriating to spend.
Okay. Okay. I think I'm, I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
See, no other hands on the council. Any questions from the public? Mr. Gross.
Sort of follow-up with Counselor Tada. That, that's the $10,000 I was just speaking of. He's, the mayor's got the $10,000 additional. If we had a $10,000 deductible, that's what we're out of pocket. That we could be receiving back from the insurance companies if they're successful with any of the four families getting back the money or all four families if they had insurance. Or they put a lien on them, but that, that'll take forever if you want insurance. That would go to the insurance company and come to us. So we could literally be sitting on the $20,000 that Cho had donated, and the mayor would put that back in the general fund if he wanted to. But hopefully, that the mayor would use that money for parks or for the kids, because that's what Cho's intention was. And instead, we're just going to pocket $20,000. So hopefully, that would be there. But the $10,000 should be there already, and hopefully, you'll see that next week.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Zirvoni?
Yes, the motion passes. Thank you again. Onto item eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move we renew the contract with the auditing, with the auditing firm of Clifton Orson Allen LLP for one year at the current price of $108,200. Terms and conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Senna, tell us why we should do this. Please.
Okay, so we did a bid that, it was a three-year bid that expired with the 63022 audit. With that, there's two options to renew. This price is very good. The, with the inflation, if we were to go out to bid, I would guess that this price would be very much higher.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just wondering what the drawback would be to going out to bid. Would they still honor this price even if we did go out to bid? Or then they would, would they be rebidding also?
They would have to rebid.
Okay.
And it would be at a higher price.
You're not, I was gonna say, they probably wouldn't honor this. Okay. All right, thank you.
Questions, comments from the public?
Gross Long Hill wrote, "When was the last time you went out to bid for this?"
Three years ago.
Do you plan on going out to bid next year?
We would, we would see if the auditors would hold it for one more year, which is part of the current bid that we're under.
But, I mean, cost isn't always what you want when you're having your auditors here. You want the best job as possible, I would think. So even if it's a 20% increase, it's $20,000. But if you're auditing, what's our budget? Is this for the whole town or just the town, not the Board of Ed?
That's for the whole town and Board of Ed.
So budget is approximately how much?
$108,200.
No, no, no. Budget for the town. Close to $200 million with the Board of Ed?
No, $180.
Well, it also includes the utilities, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
So it's over 200 with all the money. So I'm just saying to the council that hopefully they would go out to bid. I mean, these are, sometimes auditors get too comfortable being, because I don't, I don't know who they are. I'm not saying that. But as a rule of thumb, you like to change or at least go out to bid, see what's out there and change auditors, especially when you're looking at over $200 million budget. There are things that sometimes escape or somebody gets comfortable looking at. So I would hope that the council would ask them at some point in the near future to get a bid. Thank you.
All right. No other takers. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Allenson?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Zirvoni?
Yes. Onto item nine. Oh. Motion passes. Thank you. Onto item nine. I guess before I ask for a motion on this, I'm going to ask you to tell us what we're looking for. I mean, are you, are you asking us, Attorney Small, just to approve what you've included in the packet?
Yes.
All right, Tom. Mr. Vice Chairman, please move this item.
Although I do have a grammatical error.
Well, I'm coming right back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the ARPA, Nonprofits Assistance Proposal Evaluation documents.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Attorney Small, enlighten us, please.
Okay, so we've discussed this before. I left out all the history because I just figured it's just easier to give it to you. So this is the one aspect of the evaluation that's not before the committee. You may recall that the, the nonprofit grant has two components. They can ask for their own hardship or they can propose a program. So we developed the evaluation on the program. Initially, I had suggested that we mirror this portion of the request, grant program to mirror the business evaluation. You may recall that we changed the business evaluation form proposed by Councilman Zandry. So as a result of that, I might, needed to really tailor this to a nonprofit situation. So that's what this attempts to do. And it's here for your consideration. Would you think in this third bullet, should the second line, the word "have" should be "has," I think? I think I misstated that. So I think it's self-explanatory. We've had numerous conversations about this, but that's what I'm proposing.
Okay. Counselor Marrone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know that the committee has already voted on some of these nonprofit items. How does this affect what they've done already?
They haven't voted on these types. They're voting on programs. They're working on the program ones.
Oh, I see.
I've, I've talked to the chairman about this.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Did I miss a hand? Members of the public? Counselor Allenson?
Counselor Small, or Attorney Small, sorry. Can, when you talk to the chairman of the committee, I'm assuming he's in favor of this, just since he's not here. He usually is.
Yeah, he did give, he, he gave me his thoughts on what it should be. And this is in, you know, I tweaked some of the language and I had the consultant look at it also.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Just.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervone?
Yes, the motion passes. Onto item ten. Counselor Testa. Hi, what do you got for us?
I actually wrote something out for this. So I'm basically just gonna make a short speech, and you, you're better off for it, because you wouldn't want me freestyling my thoughts on this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So anyway, here's what I have to say. I asked for this discussion because of where we are. We're at a point now where, you know, we pretty much know there have been requests for probably fifty percent of our money, which is what we were hoping for. Surprise, surprise. It's great. And what are we gonna do with the other fifty percent of the ARPA money? And we've been talking about this for a long time. So here we are, it's going into February, getting close to budget time, and I have concerns. So allow me to share them. I want to make clear, I am not looking to propose any action tonight on any specific projects or spending tonight. If anyone chooses to make a motion to do so, I will vehemently oppose it. Because now's not the time to talk about specific projects. I added this item because there are two matters that we need to discuss that are directly related to how we address the use of ARPA money on municipal projects. From the beginning, I made clear my position on how we should handle this. I felt the council should propose and consider any eligible expenditures, and by majority vote authorize those that we all agree on. Of course, the matter of how expenditures are made has been a point of contention. So we're at the point where it appears that any expenditure will require a recommendation from the mayor and authorization from the council. If anyone wants to continue to challenge that, they can, they're free to do so. I'm just talking about where we are today. My priority is to get things done in a way that aligns with my preferences as closely as possible. So we can do this in a way that adheres to our standard practice, as designed, defined by charter, and also respects the spirit of the many discussions we had about this, and the mutual responsibilities we all share to make decisions that benefit the community as a whole. In other words, what this requires is good faith negotiation, as is commonly referred to in the labor contract world. In other words, let's truly do this together, council and administration. I do believe that, that the choices on what to approve still belong primarily to the council, but open, good faith discussions with the administration can still lead to a final list that reflects the positions of all of us. And how do we do this? Well, we already have a list, as it is. I'm sure the mayor also has ideas based on his surveys of departments and his planning for the upcoming budget, and there may be additional ideas that have yet to be proposed. So what I suggest is that we start now by having a special meeting devoted to itemizing and prioritizing all potential uses of ARPA funds for municipal projects, not just an agenda item. We can then choose that those we agree on, and I strongly suggest that this is done with the administration. We have a joint meeting to do this. Then we can proceed, still using the standard practice of spending. We know that the mayor can't spend without our approval, and we can't make him spend anything that he doesn't want to. Let's avoid both of those possibilities. And I suggest that anything's on the table, even our prior decision to commit five million dollars to the pool project. And I say this as arguably the strongest and most consistent advocate for that project. I still believe that it should be bonded, but if it only gets done using ARPA money, I'm okay with that. Either way, I want it done. I believe we can get a whole lot of smaller things done with the ARPA money that will not, not have to be part of the tax burden on the community, and we can bond the pool. Again, let's take that as a discussion. There are so many one, one-time expenditures and small projects that could be funded. Again, if our good faith discussions lead to the outcome of using that money for the pool, fine. I just don't want to see rushed decisions made under pressure. And as an aside on this subject, I would like an update as to progress on bidding the pool project for reconsideration, as that was promised to us, once we approved the business and nonprofit application process months ago. I would like an answer on that. That's part one. Second part is not long. My second concern is a little bit sensitive, but needs to be addressed. We are close to budget season. The mayor can very easily propose multiple items using ARPA money. If that happens, we are now in a different situation, where majority votes may not matter. If we disagree with a budget item and make changes, he can veto our changes. And at that point, we need seven votes to override it. It's a different world. If this occurs, we are effectively out of the picture completely. Let's digest that for a moment. We will be out of the picture, because I find it very hard to anticipate that we would ever have a seven-vote override of the mayor's budget if he were to include a bunch of ARPA money and we tried to change that. That's not an insult or an indictment on any council members, but I don't see that as a real possibility. So at this point, I can only appeal to the administration to please not pursue such a strategy, and work with us in good faith, and discuss with us ahead of time any uses of ARPA funds you may want to include in your budget, and then we can proceed from there. That's my presentation. I ask that we consider the approach I've suggested, and I thank you for your indulgence.
Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just gonna kind of add on to what Counselor Testa said. I, I actually anticipate seeing in the budget line items utilizing ARPA funding, only because historically, we've done this with CRA funds. We've seen items in the agenda that says, you know, use CRA money. And to Counselor Testa's point, if we were to change that and utilize budget dollars or monies that were left over from a prior year, and the mayor vetoes the budget, exactly as he put it, unless we've got seven votes, it's, it's, it reverts back to his original budget. When the budget comes proposed, use CRA money, use ARPA funds, that's the way it is. Our current budget already uses ARPA funds, small little fractional amount, it was built in. If we had tried to pull it out last time, I don't believe we did, but we did try to override the, the veto, we lost, and so those went right back in if we had done the change. So it's kind of my anticipation that that's what we're gonna see, and I, I would like to echo Counselor Testa's sentiment that, you know, this is something that we should be working on collectively, and I, I understand that it's the mayor's purview to set the budget the way that he sees fit, but I'm hoping that at least around the other items that maybe he definitely wants to place without further discussion, that we can maybe have a discussion on some of the other items and the other elements that are permissible here, because I think there is an opportunity to pick off small elements of one-time purchases and tiny capital projects that we would not normally bond out of this money, and be able to get a good exercise of use out of it. So I, I would like to, again, echo Counselor Testa's sentiment, and hopefully we can, we can approach it on an equal front. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess to your, to your point about what the mayor's plan is, it would be sort of a Machiavellian reversal for him to sort of take the approach to shove all this stuff in the budget, pay for it with ARPA money, you know, from where he's been before, which was, it was supposed to be sort of, uh, to affect items of the pandemic. But, you know, we'll, we can kind of let that, see where it goes. But I do like your idea of having a, a meeting to sit down and sort of talk out these things, a special meeting. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Questions or comments from the public? So then I suspect that we will have conversations about setting up a special meeting on this topic. Thank you. Onto item eleven. This is discussion and possible action regarding the sale of state property. The property being considered is 535 Center Street. Mayor?
Yes, I think you all have the letter that we included in the agenda. We don't recommend administratively, we have no need for that property, but you make the decisions regarding acquisition of property or, or sale, and I think we need to know your views of whether that's something the town should purchase or not. This is the property for anyone listening, 535 Center Street. It's the property right beside, it would be, well, Vinnie's Deli is on one side of the brook, and this property is on the other side. It was basically purchased in order to allow the bridge to be built, the famous bridge that has gotten attention because it was indeed too long a period of time. I think you can still get bus tours, but, so it, it appears to be property that would be useful for someone to purchase and use it as habitation.
I don't disagree with you at all, Mayor. I don't see a municipal purpose for us to acquire that. Is there any comment from the council? Counselors Zandry?
So I have a question. I mean, I don't expect them to ever work on this bridge again in my lifetime, but you never know. But I mean, they, the state purchased this to make it like a staging area and an access area for when they were doing that work, correct?
That's correct.
So, I, I mean, again, I don't expect them to do major types of work over there, but what would happen in the future if they needed some type of access? Something breaks, one of the underlying, there was, there was utilities that ran under there that they had to get access to. If, if a resident or somebody were to buy this land, would they have to allow it right away, or would they just have, they would have to deal with that?
If the state needed that property again, they would use their authority to either purchase it, or have a temporary construction easement, or, or whatever, no different than they, they did this time.
Just, it just so happened, though, that this time, the building, if I recall correctly, it was available for sale, and that's why they grabbed it, because it was open market. I, I guess my concern would be, I, is that what you're suggesting now is if they kind of really need it, and the, the person, the owner doesn't really want it, that's almost an area of eminent domain discussion there.
Well, if, if, like I said, if the state needed that property for a highway project, that would be ultimately, if negotiations failed, the, the approach that would have to be taken, and if it would mean relocation, they would have to pay for relocation of anyone who happened to be living there. But I, I suspect we're talking about a long time in the future, given the recent, recent construction, and we certainly are not aware of any reason for further construction there.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't, I'm not of the desire to purchase this either. My only concern is that based on, on additional, additional elements that things we're discussing now, and I actually walked by and I took a look at it, it's right, it's real close to where the river is, so it doesn't make it attractive to, to most people anyway. You know, my concern is that nobody buys it, and it, and it's not in awesome shape right now, but it's not bad, it's not blight yet, but when we get there, what do we do about that?
Well, it's owned by the state of Connecticut, so certainly we have recourse through the normal means of contacting the state with regard to the condition of the property. That's Wharton Brook, for anyone who wants to know the name of the brook. It, it does have pretty heavy flows at times, but the bridge should be able to handle that circumstance. It, it's, it appears to be an attractive property for some of the purchase, from my viewpoint, but we'll find out. If that doesn't happen, then let time, time be an indicator of what direction should be taken by any of the parties.
Makes sense. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Allenson?
So, do we know who the state bought the property from and for how much?
We could get that information. I don't have it right now.
Okay, and then, then my second question is, why do we want this property?
We don't.
Oh, okay, so.
Right. No, we're, we're not, administratively, we check with all the departments, utilities, et cetera, and there, no one has a need for the property.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to ask you, like, if there was an instance in which we would want this, like, if it was feeding a water source, sorry, I'm feeding back, if it was feeding a water source or something like that, but if it's, if, if it's not, then...
I mean, I can't say there's absolutely no way the town would ever need it. We have
Of course.
A number of, of utility connections. I think there's something like seven connections under that bridge between gas, water, sewer. It's, it's a complicated arrangement under the bridge, which is part of the reason it took a long time to construct it. But it's pure hypotheticals, and during the time, it, it would be genius to have it when you suddenly need it at some point, but what happens to the property in between? And for us to spend money on maintaining it and making it useful in some other way, there's just no interest in doing that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I think that's been talked out, and, well, just item eleven. So on to item twelve. Can I get a motion to go into executive session, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 1-225F and Section 1-2006B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the following pending tax appeal matters. Varan Siddiqui versus Town of Wallingford, 173 Church Street LLC versus Town of Wallingford, 38 Warehouse Point Road LLC versus Town of Wallingford, Yalesville Properties LLC versus Town of Wallingford, 68 North Plains, Wallingford LLC versus Town of Wallingford, and J. Gavin Properties LLC versus Town of Wallingford.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Thank you. Thank you.